Six. Okay. Six o'clock, then we're gonna call the June twenty fourth board study session as a whole to order. Roll call, please, Lamonda.
Robert Bianca, Jeff Anderson, Mary Gill, Sean Hamilton.
Here.
Quinn Harden.
Here.
Chuck Lander. Ken Miller.
Here. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a heck of a lot better than doing it on the line. Okay, Dr. Bug.
Okay. Once again, it's good to see everybody and nice to be meeting in person again. And we, obviously, with all things going on around this, we have a lot of information to go over with you today. So I asked Chris Spencer to be here and I put this item first on the agenda just to give everybody an update on where we're at with the graduation ceremony. The new phase four guidance that just came out is going to allow us to carry on, I think, with our graduation plans. So, Chris, I'll let you talk a little bit. You can do it.
Yeah.
And let them know what the, what the plans are and kind of how you plan on moving forward.
Absolutely. So with us moving on to July, July twenty fifth is our date and the goal is that we're gonna have it no matter what that day. And we're hoping that we're gonna be able to have it outside. Mr. Kirkland and I went out last week and spent some time on the football field in the stands just to kind of get an idea what we think we can make it happen. Also, Mr. Smith got us the architects or two, the architects' information on what we can fit in the stadium and on the field as well. It will look very similar to what we used to do. We used to have graduation outside if the weather was conducive to that. So the plan is we're gonna have the students seated seated on the field, spread out six feet apart. So we went out and kind of measured and we had chairs lined up and everything just to make sure we were getting a good visual. And we're having, I think, ten rows of eighteen, which gives us plenty of chairs, plenty of seating for our students. On the stage, we have fifty yard line, not quite in the middle of the field. So we think that's gonna work out nice. Standwise, we're gonna have it, we're gonna give each two tickets or at least two people that they can come in with them to observe it. And we have, we have it measured out too where we think we can set two at a time and then six foot, six foot space, another two feet, six foot. And we think we can get pretty close to all the family members and friends that were coming on the field or in the bleachers. We're gonna probably put some chairs down on the track, I think, just to make sure everybody's, we've got enough. But what we think will be pretty close, we're gonna use probably caution tape to block off the bleachers. The plan is that when students arrive and the guests arrive, we're gonna go directly to their seats. I just visited today with Wilmington there, they've got Thursday this weekend, so something very similar. And I got some ideas from them, I think I'm gonna kind of look at what he's doing and then what we can do to make whatever gonna work best for us. But we feel pretty confident that if it's, if the weather cooperates, we can have a really nice ceremony still for our students and put that on for them. Backup plan, of course, if, if the doesn't, if the weather doesn't cooperate, the idea is that we'll have it inside. And what we'll do is we'll alphabetically bring in fifteen at a time and their two guests, it gets us to forty five, we can have fifty people inside. And have our social distancing still, so they can at least get pictures, call out their names, let them walk across the stage. Those fifteen exit, we bring fifteen more in and their thirty, their thirty guests and go through it that way. Still, at two o'clock is the goal on that, the twenty fifth of July. So I'm excited about it. I know a lot of people are ready to be over with and get, but we wanna make sure that we give the opportunity for our students to do that. And I think, I think it's gonna be a good ceremony either way. Hopefully, you get outside, that would be really nice.
And, you know, for the board, given social distancing and the number of people, I mean, Ken will be there, I'm assuming. Ken will be there with me. But board members, usually, we want you to come, you don't have to. I know some of you have graduates and will be there anyway if you get invited. And, but other board members, if you wanna come, we'll make room, we'll make it happen. But you're not expected to like we've done in the past. So just let us know, you know, what your plans are for that day. Any questions for Chris? And Chris, this pretty much mirrors what local schools have been doing.
Yeah, we've kind of taken, Senate did this early on, Wilmington's doing it this weekend, I know Brady was doing it this weekend. Kind of taking what Senate did and what we've talked to other schools in Wilmington and kind of make it what's gonna work best for us, so.
Is the faculty going, required to go if they're not there?
We probably won't this time just because of the social distancing piece. They have not sent a wind, but I don't think we'll have them there just because of the social distancing piece.
So it's still separate July twenty fifth, I'm sorry. July twenty fifth, yep.
And what do you do if more people show up?
Well, we're gonna have some local friends help us out, I think. They always seem to, they're there, we'll have some volunteers, we'll ask the staff members to help us out with, with helping out the wall sponsors. Our SROs and anybody else available. One thing I think that I like what Wilmington did is the kids showed up at the same times as our two guests. And they walked in together, the students went right to their seats and the guests went up to their seats. So I think that'll be the best way to do it. So that way we know exactly who the two guests are supposed to be and they're learning what their student can go from there. And I'm gonna be putting together a letter, send out hopefully by the end of the week, that'll be very detailed and outline what's exactly expected. And I'll probably send it out again closer to the, because I know some parents are wondering, I got a call today asking if it was still on. Because if anybody, they're on vacation, I gotta make sure that they're available if we're having, so. Might get that out pretty quick, but I wanna make sure it's, we got as many details as possible for them.
So, and back to Jeff's question on faculty, Chris, if faculty want to come, are you gonna be able to accommodate some that want to come, possibly?
I think we're sending someone out to staff and ask them if they were gonna come to give us a heads up. And I think we line them up, probably up to twenty to fifteen yard line, we'll put chairs out there for them, six, six feet apart for social distancing. That way they can go and sit right there or off the, out of the stands, away from the parents and families, but also still able to witness the graduation ceremony.
I definitely think you should send them an invite, I'd be curious as to how many would show up.
Oh, will, yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna ask for a reply just so we can make sure we're planning for the Mount Sean morning.
Good. Any other questions for Chris? So hopefully we get this pulled off and the weather cooperates, it'll be nice and cool.
Oh, I'm sure, two o'clock next year is a good time.
Twenty fifth. So.
Looks awesome, sure, it's a timer.
Be nice to pull it off and get some closure for those kids, so. Any other questions for Chris? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Von, Ken?
Yeah, please.
All right. Next item, the twenty twenty one school calendar. As you know, the board previously approved the official twenty twenty one school calendar. As I told you at last month's board meeting, there's still a possibility that our August seventeenth start date could change based on COVID issues. As we've talked about before, it's very important that we stay relatively consistent with the other three Grundy County school districts that feed into GABC. Discussions on this issue have continued, we have a GABC meeting tomorrow, but no final decisions have been made yet. Originally, we were considering moving the start date back to September eighth after Labor Day, thinking that would be the best chance to have in-person instruction. But interestingly, recent communication from the ISBE has been to consider an earlier start to potentially beat a winter recurrence of the coronavirus. A lot of colleges are doing that. We already start on August seventeenth. Sometimes our state superintendent speaks with Chicago in mind, they don't ever start till September eighth anyway, you know, after Labor Day. So moving a week or two for them is not that big of a deal. Moving a week or two forward for us either puts us at August tenth or August third. I have a few concerns with that. One would be August third, I'm concerned whether we're even gonna be ready to go by then and have enough time to have everything ready. Plus, you know, family travel, vacations, those sorts of things that are already planned. So my guess is we'll continue with the August seventeenth date, but we'll discuss that at the GABC meeting tomorrow as well. Another calendar issue that has recently come up is a new state law making November third Election Day a state holiday. The ISBE has provided guidance that all schools must be closed on the holiday and we can't apply for a holiday waiver and we can't make it a Teacher Institute Day. As a result, we have to add another day to our calendar someplace. I have sent, I know that, you know, the board gets to make that final decision, but we always ask for union input. I sent the union leadership four different options to look at for adding that day where we put it in the calendar. By next week, I plan to have that finalized. I also am hoping that we have a final start of the school calendar that we can approve next week as well. So that will all be coming next week, I'd like to get that information to parents as soon as possible. So, because like I said, I just don't see the early start being realistic and I don't see a later start happening. So, any questions on the calendar?
Nope.
Okay. I've got a lot of information for you on remote learning transition plan and a lot more information that has come up since the ISBE dropped the new guidance yesterday afternoon. We have developed a transition planning document, which I've shared with the board previously, that's serving as our umbrella over the planning process. The goal of our plan was to involve a large and diverse group of school district stakeholders. If you've reviewed the document, you see we have a lot of different committees. We have parents, we have students, we have support staff, we have teachers. We put together, I put together a citizens advisory committee where I have community leaders, more parents involved in that. So we have, we have a lot of people that we've involved in our process. The subcommittees have started working, they've been going at it now for a couple of weeks. Jason is in charge of the facilities and, what's the name of that, Jay? Facilities and Operations Committee, Tammy's in charge of teaching and learning. And Sandy Rakes is in charge of the Health and Wellness Committee. I'm running the District Advisory Committee and also the Citizens Advisory Committee. So all of those groups are continuing to work. There's a timeline in the document, but obviously, things changed very quickly yesterday when we received the new ISBE guidance that I sent to all of you. The sixty-page ISBE document provides a lot of recommendations, and I want to be clear, you have to read that document very, very carefully. And I put together a summary to share with my administrative team because there's a big difference between recommend and must. And there's a lot of recommendations for us to consider and there are some things that are non-negotiables in there that we have to do. And so I spent time yesterday parsing those things out and there are really five non-negotiables that every single public and private school in Illinois is going to have to follow for in-person instruction. One, which is the one that's causing, obviously, the most angst with people, is all individuals in school buildings must wear face coverings at all times, even when social distancing is maintained. It's required. There are exceptions for children younger than two years of age, people who have trouble breathing or people who are unable to remove the face cover without assistance. And a physician's note is required for students who are not able to wear a face covering because of breathing issues or anxiety issues. No more than fifty individuals can gather in a single space within the school, right now we're still at ten. We moved to fifty when we moved to phase four on Friday. So once again, we have to sit down and talk about community use of our athletic facilities, outdoor facilities, what all that's gonna look like now that we can have fifty. Social distancing much be, must be observed, but importantly, it says as much as possible. I was, there was a webinar today, there's been a lot of communications going back and forth. The state wants us to social distance and as you know, social distancing is six feet apart like we are here. But the state has said, if you can't accomplish that, you do it the best you can, because everybody's wearing face masks. So the goal is to get as many kids back into school as possible. And that means if we have to put twenty-four kids in a classroom to, and everybody's in a face mask to get our kids in school, we have the ability to do that. That's why they're requiring face masks all the time so that schools aren't limited to how many kids they can fit in their classrooms. Now, we've done a lot of work on Jason's committee, a lot of work on how many kids can we actually fit, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. A fourth non-negotiable is schools must conduct symptom screenings and temperature checks on everybody that comes into the school building or require that individuals self-certify that they are symptom-free before entering school. We're waiting for more guidance on what that self-certification means, whether I can just walk in and say, I'm good. Or what that means. I know a lot of you at your workplace deal with that already, I know Jeff, you deal with that a lot at your workplace. So we're already, we're trying to figure out what some of that self-certification's gonna look like. But every kid that comes in the building is either gonna get a temperature check or self-certify and every staff member, every guest. So we have to have a process in place for that. And lastly, schools have to increase school-wide cleaning and disinfection. We already talked to the board about spending our grant dollars that we've got, the COVID grant that we have for new custodial positions. So we're starting that process and you'll see that actually at the board meeting next week. What's important to realize is, and I've already had people contact me about it, as you probably know, those are non-negotiables. So the board does not have the ability to say, you know what, we're gonna take action to say kids don't have to wear face masks. We, we can't do that, we don't have that ability. So the five things there are non-negotiables. There are a lot of other recommendations that we have flexibility on. And the committees are working not only on how to implement these five non-negotiables, but which of these recommendations do we do, which don't we do, what can we do, what can't we do? And there are sixty pages worth of them. So we've got a lot of work to do in a very short period of time to come up with this. Jason has been chairing the Facilities and Operations Committee. They've been working with our architects to provide floor plans for each of our schools, showing how many students we can fit in each space if we keep them six feet apart. The good news is for us, even if we had to keep them six feet apart, we can still house all of our kids. We have space, which is good. Now, supervision becomes an issue, we have to figure that out on our end. But we have plenty of space to house all of our kids. And I want to clarify this for everybody, because there's a lot of misinformation. You know, a lot of people have heard, well, you can only be at fifty percent capacity. And people believe that meant only fifty percent of your kids could come. Fifty percent of our student population at the high school is very different than fifty percent of our student capacity at the high school. We can fit eleven hundred, whatever it is, what's our normal capacity?
Non-restricted capacity at the high school is about twelve hundred. Restricted capacity, social distance capacity is like nine oh two and our enrollment is six sixty.
So, so we have plenty of space in all of our buildings to be able to house, even if we social distance now. We are probably gonna try to social distance the best we can, but we're not gonna split a class of twenty down to fifteen if those five kids have to be in front of a non-teacher. You know, we wanna do what's best for our kids still, knowing that we have that flexibility. So we're still working through what that looks like, but if anybody would ask you, there is zero doubt, we can house all of our kids, given the current guidelines. Zero doubt. We could even take more. So we have room, there is nothing out there that says we can only have fifty percent of our kids in the building. There's nowhere in the guidance that it says that. So we, we can house all the kids when they come back to school, full enrollment. We don't have to go on an A B schedule, we don't have to do any of those things, we have plenty of room, we can take them all. So we'll figure that, we'll figure out the logistics to that. But I think that's an important clarification that the board needs to know, because there was a lot of misinformation going around from people saying, well, you can only have fifty percent of your kids there. That, I don't know where that came from.
So what's the best way to get that out to the website, radio?
Well, there's gonna be. There's gonna be something going out to parents. And Gil, when she gets back, is gonna be doing an article for the paper. We'll get it out to the radio station. I mean, what people need to know is, we can house their kids.
We plus some, need, need.
Plus, we'll take others.
Yeah.
We can house their kids.
But I mean, we do have space, we don't, it's not tight.
Not that, not that it's our circumstance, but the flip side of that is, I don't know, maybe we don't, let's just pick somebody. You know, some of those buildings that have jam-packed, they can't pass referendums, they may not be able to do that, and that's no offense to them, that's their problem, not our problem.
Right? So we, we, we've done that work, the architects have been great. In fact, I think they did this for free for us, for every building, every space we have, they did, the gym, every place.
The best thing to do is also say we're going out to state guidelines.
Right. And Chuck, that's another important point, and it's in every letter that I send out. You know, we are going to continue to follow the state guidelines. For in-person instruction, there is no choice. Now, somebody could say, what are they gonna do to you? Well, the problem is if somebody gets sick and you didn't follow the guidelines, now you got a big problem.
They'll be kind of, I'm sure.
Now you got, well, you have legal, you have legal problems then. So we're gonna continue to follow those guidelines. A couple other things that we learned today, once again, like I said, the most important is, the state is not requiring the six-foot distance. They're allowing flexibility on that as long as everybody has their face mask. So that's good news for us. We also learned today that students can wear clear face shields like you see at the hospital instead of face masks, because originally it said face mask, that was clarified today, that might be extremely beneficial for our little kids.
And people have breathing issues.
Right. And teachers, to be able to wear that, because, you know, make eye contact and teachers at the elementary level teaching reading, they use their mouth. So we're vetting all of that right now to see what that looks like. But like I said, I think the most important thing is, most districts are looking at a remote learning option, full in-person or hybrid option, we don't need a hybrid option. We, we're only gonna offer two things, and let me talk about that for a minute. Even though we can house all of our kids, we know we are going to have to have a remote option for medically fragile kids. I also believe that we need to offer a remote option in general for those parents who may be, for whatever reason, uneasy sending their kids to school, whether it's because they have to wear a face mask, whether it's because they're scared they're gonna get sick. And here's my reasoning for that. If we don't do that, then those parents are most likely going to homeschool their kids and then we lose total control over curriculum and instruction, because that homeschool is only going to be for a small amount of time. What we want to make sure for the kids, and we need to do what's best for our kids, is that if we can offer a remote option, I don't know how many parents will do it, but if we can offer a remote option, now when those kids come back to us, hopefully, in November, December, January, whenever it is, it's a seamless transition and we bring them back and we know what they've learned and they've already got a teacher and, you know, so that's why I think we need to offer that option. We're still vetting what that's gonna look like in the Teaching and Learning Committee, but I, I do think that's gonna be important for us. I've got, I haven't sent it yet, because I wanted to talk to the board about it. I have a parent letter ready to go, we have a quick Google survey ready to go to see if we offered in-person or if we offered a full remote option, which one would you want your kids to do? We're not gonna hold parents to it right now, because things are gonna change. But just to give us some initial idea, are we talking about twenty kids total or are we talking about five hundred kids total? I don't know.
What does that do for staffing though, like, let's say for aides in particular, if, if, let's say there's a big number now and then you hope to get them back later? How would you, it's not like you'd have all these aides and stuff now if you don't have the numbers, but knowing that the numbers are coming, you keep them like in the bullpen, saying, okay, when the numbers change, we need, we're gonna need you and?
Well, we still got the aides, Jeff, we never riffed.
Right, but what I'm saying is, would you still keep them if, let's say, five hundred?
We'd have to make that decision.
But then that, that's my concern, because then, okay, now, in January, now they all come back. You've lost maybe some of those people you had. Yeah. That you wanted to keep, but obviously maybe go find something else because they don't know.
Yeah, and I think, and I think that's why we gotta get these numbers.
Yeah.
To try to get some idea of what we're talking about.
That's why it's good to do that survey.
I really believe that the majority of kids that do that are going to be kindergarten, first grade, that the parents are worried about them and don't want them wearing a face mask and, you know, so. But we'll see. I don't know. But I, but I really firmly believe that this full remote option, in the long run, is gonna be beneficial to us, because otherwise, it's gonna be a nightmare trying to transition these kids back in if we've had no contact with them for six months or four months or whatever that timeframe is. So that's why I'd like to offer that remote option. And, and we'll see how many, say, are gonna take advantage of it and how many aren't, I don't know.
That's the thing, we've got survey out there just to see.
So if the board's okay, I'd like to get that out tomorrow, get that letter out and try to find out where we're at.
Let's get that, get that and get that survey back.
With those things. Tammy Ellis is chairing the Teaching and Learning Committee. I think one thing that's important is, and I told Tammy this, remote learning, if it's an option, is gonna look very, very different than remote learning looked last spring. Last spring, it was, the guidance was do no harm to the kids, let's get them through. Well, if a parent decides to do a remote learning option this time and, you know, Jason's teaching physics class and there's a lecture at one o'clock, you better be on at one o'clock. We're not gonna do it again for you at eight o'clock at night, because you didn't get out of bed or whatever, so.
And you're not gonna videotape and say?
I, I don't know that, Jeff, but what, but there is going to be a lot more accountability and responsibility. And I can't be asking our teachers to teach all day and then do remote learning all night. So there's going to be responsibilities, we've talked about learning contracts, we've talked about, you know, signing agreements, all sorts of those things. So we're still, once again, vetting those. But remote learning, I think it's very important if you get asked questions about remote, well, I'm just gonna let my kid do remote, because that was so easy last semester. Well, that's gonna change. You know, it's, it's going to be different this time.
You can't offer attendance and stuff like that, it's basically the same as if you're in school, correct?
Correct. Because you're one of our students.
Absolutely.
We have to account for you, for sure. Also, I think, you know, and I know I've, I've got a lot of information on this, but I just wanna make sure, you're gonna start getting a lot of questions, I know, as board members, and I wanna get you as much information as I can. Our transition teams are talking about a lot of different options right now. There's a lot of things on the table. Are we gonna do them all? Probably not, but you know how people panic when things start to get out there. We're looking at things like going back to half-day kindergarten, because it'll reduce the number of kids at one time, we can make smaller classes. We had half-day kindergarten for years until we went to full day a few years ago.
Years and years.
And also, that means we don't need as many teachers at kindergarten and we could maybe take a couple of those teachers and move them to other grade levels to reduce class sizes. So we're, we're talking about those things, we're talking about high school schedules, we're on an eight-block. We've talked about the potential of moving to a four-block schedule, so that the kids only have four classes if we go to remote, for whatever reason. They've only got four classes, not eight classes now. So there's a lot of things on the table, it's all gonna get finalized in the transition plan coming up, but we've gotta vet these things and we've got so many people on our committees, word's gonna get out about those things. So I think just, you know, the calming word is, we're considering all options. We haven't made any decisions yet. When we make decisions, it'll be in the transition document and everybody's gonna know after the board approves it. So, but I think overall, the most important thing is, we have the opportunity to have all of our kids back in school. but I think overall, the most important thing is we have the opportunity to have all of our kids back in school. And that's what we want, is to have all of our kids back in school.
And the plus is that they're all gonna be starting new classes.
Right.
So they can, if they get there right away, they can get off and on the road running. It's not like they have to go back and say, well, now wait a minute, when are we due? In February or March or whatever.
Yeah.
Classes are all gonna be.
You know, other things that we, we've been talking a lot about, a lot of this is Teaching and Learning Committee, is, you know, our teachers all have to teach with the understanding that we could be in a remote learning environment like that.
Absolutely.
We could be regular learning on Tuesday, something happens, we could be in remote learning on Wednesday. And so our teachers need to be prepared for that. So we're talking about professional development over the summer and making sure everybody's using a common platform. And so it's, it's, I know we have a lot of people involved, but there's a lot of decisions that have to be made in a short period of time. So it's, it's going to be very busy. You're gonna be getting a lot of communications from me to keep you updated over the next few weeks. Um, but you know, the first draft of the plan is due July the sixth. And then we start getting the citizens groups together and, um, it's gonna happen fast.
I know there's a lot of, a lot of unknowns and a lot of whatever has to agree. But I guess, you know, we also look at our roles, the board members, and we hire you and you take care of everybody else. So it'd be hopeless to probably ask, are there additional support that you need to make sure that, I mean, I know you're talking about this in the classroom, that in the classroom, that kind of stuff. But I'm thinking about up here at the mothership level. I mean, do you need additional support? Because if so, that's something I think you need to be comfortable coming back and asking us because this is a lot of stuff that's fallen potentially one person or two people or Tammy's shoulders or whatever. And I, I think it's just, you need to be comfortable to ask us if you need some help.
Well, I appreciate it. But I think with, and we've got great people here. I think with the people here, we're, we're gonna be able to handle what we have to handle. The, the challenge is going to be coming, moving forward. The staffing and personnel that we may need to pull a lot of this stuff off. We, I told my administrators today, we, we have to start thinking differently about how we're utilizing existing staff. Think, for example, at the high school, if we take all of our kids, we have six hundred kids coming in the entrance of the high school. It's gonna be like going to a concert where you have corrals and the kids have to come through because we've gotta do a temperature check on every kid that comes through the door. Well, how many people does that take to do that? And where do those people come from? That's why we have to start thinking about, well, if we move to a half-day kindergarten, now I can free up a couple of teachers, maybe a couple aides. You know, what happens to specials at that level? You know, what happens to special ed instruction? How do we start utilizing the staff we have more efficiently or differently to be able to accomplish this? Because, you know, the, the answer to, to a lot of our staff members is always, well, go, we need, we need fifteen more aides. They're not out there. We, we put out, you know, for aides, we don't get them anymore. Because they get better jobs at Amazon or other places now. So those jobs, those people aren't there. So we have to figure out how we're gonna utilize people differently. Our teachers, and I sent an email today that I copied all of you on, our teachers have to understand that it's gonna look different. And their job responsibilities are most likely going to change. And if you've taught this grade for this many years, for a year, you might have to move. And then we'll move you back. But it is what it is right now. We, we, everybody's gotta adapt and work differently and think differently to be able to pull this off. The answer can't always be just add more people.
But I also wanna piggyback and then off of what he said, Sean said, and circle back to what you said. I don't, you know, you talked, talked about how you don't want your teachers teaching all day and doing a remote learning all night. Well, I don't want people on your leadership team to be here for sixteen hours a day trying to get this done. Well, and I know it's gonna happen. I know it's not gonna, if you need help, we need help. I mean, it does you no good to be here sixteen hours a day trying to figure it out because it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
That, I think that's kinda, you're gonna burn yourself out.
Can't burn out the executive slash leadership team, right? And it's, well, we've got twenty-two hundred kids that are good, but we just burned everybody out.
Don't, you're, you're setting an expectation which you don't want from teachers, but don't do that to yourself.
Yeah, and I think so.
Don't work sixteen hours a day, which I know you're gonna do anyways.
Don't, don't be afraid to come back to us to say, we.
Holy cow, this is crazy. It's a snowball. This is not.
And I need some help.
I appreciate that.
Moving chairs to the deck, maybe some of those chairs have to come here and help you. Would you something, just, just keep all that, keep that open too. That's all.
So you maybe reiterate off of that team that you started.
Reiterate the same that, you know, we should, personally, we should give you the authorization to make those changes when you need to make those changes. We, we give you authorization to, to hire staff after the fact every school year. Um, making adjustments with existing teachers. If anybody knows those positions and know where they need to go are you. And you know it best. Waiting for our authorization or, or having an issue with that. I mean, maybe we should give you that authorization right now or at the, at the next meeting that due to the metrics of this whole situation, and we know it, well, we hope it's short-term.
Yeah.
But move it forward when you have to.
And quit, and that's, that's no different than what, you know, what the cities and all that stuff do when they give, when they have their grueling declarations and they have, you know, administrators do that and, and mayors do that and that kind of stuff. I guess what we're all saying here, I think collectively is this situation is so different. We know that means not to go out there and, like, I would spend a bunch of money. I, I just wanna make sure that you here and your, that your executive team is just as important to us as the twenty-two hundred kids and the two-hundred and some staff members. Don't shortchange yourselves if you need something. Make sure you got a little box in that plan that worries about you guys. Because we're, we, we got your backs and just ask or we'll give you authorization and just do it.
Give you authorization.
I, I appreciate it. Like I said, right now, I think we, I'm not gonna say have it under control, but we're getting there. But I, you know.
Let's just start.
It is. And it, it is a lot. I mean, you start thinking about the day, like I said, from getting the kids in the corrals and in the building to, you know, hallways, one-way hallways and lunch. And which kids have medically excused for masks and how do you identify those kids? And, you know, how do you identify kids, period, when they're wearing a mask for school safety? Do kids have back facts? Do they get to go to their lockers? Do we open the doors? Do we close the doors? Do we open the windows? Do we close the windows? What's all that gonna look like? So every single thing leads to other decisions that have to be made. Like I've told my administrative team, we met again this morning. Um, I told them, we're gonna put a plan together and it's probably gonna be wrong. And we're gonna have to adjust it after we live it. That's just the way it is.
There were those before.
You know, so, and that's it. We're in uncharted territory. So I appreciate the support.
The one thing I'm encouraged to is, I know you, there was a rotational, you had a bunch of people on different rotations.
Here?
Yeah, that were doing like, we worked with Jason, worked with you.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pull some of those people together and you utilize them. And if it's a stipend or a little bit or whatever that you need them to do, maybe use that people ever in that group.
Spread the ball.
Yeah, just, just.
Spread the fun.
You, yeah, you guys, just again, we were, take, take care of yourselves too and don't forget that piece of the plan.
Yeah. And like I said, I, I appreciate that. And my, my team has been, I couldn't be happier with them and the leadership they've shown and Jason, Tammy and Sandy with their groups and the other administrators. And it's since March, it's been non-stop. So they, they've done a good job. I've been proud of them. So thank you for that. And I'll, I'll, I'll stay in touch regarding that. So, um, that's it then for the transition planning. There's gonna be a lot more information coming out. We're gonna be inundating parents and community with information to try to make sure the facts get out there and that Facebook doesn't rule the day. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue to get that information out. So don't be surprised if your emails continue to fill up. Um, staffing transition plan. Uh, wanted to update the board, uh, for a variety of reasons. We've experienced a, a bit of an abnormally high number of teacher resignations this summer. Uh, as always, in accordance with previous board direction, we always look for opportunities where we can maybe run more efficiently and restructure. Um, it just so happened that where these resignations took place, we're in pretty good spots to allow us to restructure. Some of these were already on our plan to restructure. We just were able to accelerate by a year. Um, the Budget Efficiency Committee that Sean and Quint served on, we met last spring. Recom, and that committee, one of the recommendations to the board was to continue to take advantage of retirements and those leaving the district as opposed to having to re-employ employees. Um, as I previously explained to the board, uh, we were able to accelerate our staffing transition plan in first grade when Jamie Frazier resigned. We had planned on the, the end of this year, when Pam Bigner resigned, not replacing that position because of declining enrollment. We were able to accelerate that by a year and not replace Jamie Frazier. So the board got that a year in advance, which is helpful on the budget. And by the way, we were able to do that and the class sizes are gonna be exactly the same as they were this past year because of declining enrollment. Um, we are right now at a hundred and fifteen kindergarten kids that are registered. Lowest we ever, ever had by a huge amount since I've been here. So, um, so we had her resign. Uh, we also received a resignation from Just Zierman. Uh, she is moving to Tennessee with her husband and her family is there. Um, and she was a first, uh, kindergarten teacher. Well, when you had seven sections of kindergarten with only a hundred and fifteen kids coming in, we could reduce that to six, still keep class sizes under twenty. So we didn't need to replace that. So we were able to save those two positions based on declining enrollment. I told the board previously, Carrie Troll taught elementary Spanish. Uh, she resigned. Her husband took an administrative job, um, in.
Gridley, El Paso.
Thank you. El Paso, Gridley. And, uh, he took a job down there. They're moving down that direction. So I don't think she's even gonna teach anymore. Uh, she taught elementary Spanish. We had considerable discussion with the K through five principals on what to do with that position. I wanted them to review it, see where we're at. As you know, most districts don't offer elementary Spanish like we do. It's a unique program that we have. Um, but after meeting with the K five principals, department leaders and Tammy Elidge, they made a recommendation to me to restructure the elementary Spanish program. And instead of hiring a Spanish teacher for K one-two, they wanna hire a science specialist for K one-two with the purpose being that by hiring that science specialist, we free up those K one-two teachers to spend an hour more per week in reading instruction, which aligns with our board's longstanding, uh, goal of trying to get all of our kids to grade level by third grade. So we aren't saving that position. We're recommending restructuring that position to something different. That means Ronnie Aldrich, who taught K one-two Spanish, will now move to grades three, four and five. And we'll start the first year of Spanish instruction here will be a grade three. K one-two will be more intensified reading instruction now with that added time. So no added staff, just a different hire. Um, so we have three positions that resigned at that basically early childhood center level. And we're only replacing one of those positions moving forward. As long as the board's okay with that change. Any questions on that? All right. Uh, board meeting dates. You see the board meeting dates are in your packet. Uh, there's going to be approval at next week's board meeting for this. Let me know if you see any calendar conflicts. Notice that I already marked out the November study session because of the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, you know that with study sessions, sometimes we cancel December as well, depending on what's going on. But I left it on the calendar for now in case we needed it with all the craziness. Who knows when, how often we're gonna need the board to get together. So, but if you see any conflicts, please let me know so we can make those adjustments prior to next week. But Wanda will put that on the board meeting agenda for approval next week. Questions on that? Um, Forecast Five. A couple of years ago, there was a recommendation from the Board's Finance Committee, which Sean and Quint serve on, to use an outside consultant to verify and provide a fresh perspective on the school district's long-term financial forecast. One of the reasons that the board really wanted this was as we looked at potential budget reductions down the road, you know, nobody could accuse the board of crying wolf and not giving the real facts. You had a third party coming in and taking a look at it. Um, so the board decided to move forward and approved a contract with Forecast Five a couple of years ago. And basically what the company provides is a diagnostic tool that Jason can use to plug in financial data and essentially verify the financial projection models that he already creates for the board. Um, I think this has served the board well for the last couple of years. But after talking with Jason, I don't think we're convinced the service is still worth the eleven thousand dollars per year the board's investing in it. Um, I, I believe that, you know, we have shown that Jason's, uh, predictions are accurate. And we've already met with the Budget Efficiency Committee. We already have a plan in place for budget efficiency and budget reductions. So I think our recommendation would be to no longer utilize this service um, as part of our budget efficiency planning. It could be a reduction of eleven thousand dollars that we take out of the budget. Um, but Jason, I don't know if you have any further comments on that for the board.
As we try to prioritize budget spending, particularly in light of the challenges that we have in front of us. Although the service was, was beneficial, it's not critical to, I think, our, the operation at the level that we've been able to operate. And so I would, I would rather reprioritize these dollars or recommend that you reprioritize these dollars for the mitigation strategies that we're gonna need to put in place here in the next three months. So.
Yeah, and you know, I always try to think in terms of personnel. I mean, it's roughly a part-time, you know, is that amount of money. So we need to think about how we use that money efficiently. I think it served its purpose. It helped us. It really provided some good verification when we work with the union and negotiations and budget reduction committee. But I, I think we feel pretty solid about the tool Jason's using.
And if, if, if you're down the road, if that's a system that needs to come back, you should just, you can bring it back sometime now or two, right? So we're prioritizing the future.
Right. Okay. So there's no action the board needs to take. It's just a matter of we don't renew the contract. We don't pay the invoice and we don't renew the contract. Jason will get in touch with them to make sure that they know. Nothing they've done wrong.
No.
The service has been good. It's just looking at efficiencies. So speaking of that, next contract, ATI Physical Therapy Contract. Um, during the mandated school closure at the board's directive, we analyzed uh, all existing contracts which we weren't receiving services for. Uh, the contract with ATI was one of those that was identified. They provide physical therapy services. And as you know, the entire spring season was canceled, spring athletic season. Um, we did receive an invoice from them for the final fourteen weeks of service. They, they send their invoices covering fourteen weeks at a time. Um, and they sent for the full contractual amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, Jason contacted them to dispute the amount because the spring season was canceled. The ATI rep disputed our position, um, sent the attached letter, which you have, and they agreed to reduce their original invoice by ten percent. Um, they had some reasoning, they felt like that that made sense to them. We didn't necessarily agree with that reasoning. Um, so that was a little bit disappointing. Um, also, those of you that have had kids go through, Emily has been our trainer for quite a few years. She's awesome. She's been fantastic. Emily's not coming back next year um, for family reasons. It's a demanding job, a lot of hours. So she's not coming back next year anyway. Based on the contract issue, based on the fact that our trainer is not coming back anyway, we have had people approach us in the past asking about bidding on our physical therapy services. Um, we do have in the contract a thirty-day out where we can give them thirty days' notice. I, I, I think, you know, after talking about it, my recommendation would be um, that we exercise the out clause in the current contract and go out for RFP for new physical therapy services. ATI is welcome to put one in. Um, but I think it's time to go out and see what's out there. I think the timing couldn't be better. And, you know, periodically, it's a good thing to do anyway.
ATI has gotten pretty self-righteous in a lot of ways and a lot of areas. And they're saying, hey, we don't, when they first came in, they were new. You know, and they're willing to bend over backwards. And now they don't care an awful lot. They're, I mean, they thud their nose at people and say, what the heck? What are you gonna do? You know, I, I wasn't a bit happy when I saw that. And the fact that they're keeping, they're going up and up and up. You know, yeah, we, I think it's time that we go out. There's gotta be somebody else out there. Don't, don't take me wrong. I love what they do, okay? And it's nice as a coach to have that person. What's that, Jeff?
We should always competitively, hey, is there someone?
Exactly.
But I do wanna caution you too, we paid a lot of stuff, contractual stuff in the spring that we didn't get any, anything for.
We did, yeah.
So, I mean, this, yeah, this one here, there, there was a lot of stuff that we got, we paid for.
And I think, you know, it's, to me, it's really.
Definitely, we should bet it.
It's really not necessarily based on this contract issue as much as it is the timing with Emily leaving. And it's, if you were ever gonna do it, if Emily were coming. If you were ever gonna do it, if Emily were coming back, I would probably tell you, let's suck it up and let's stay in the contract. You know, she was she was that good, I think.
She was good.
I mean, those of you that had kids go through, I think she's.
She was very good. And and that takes a. Tremendous on us off the coaches.
And I think part of our recommendation as well was to not put the board in a position where, again, the force majeure clause made us pay for service that we weren't able to get because of something that was out of our control because of I H S A or I E S A saying yes or no. Here's what abbreviated seasons or no seasons look like. So I think it's prudent at this time. That fact as well, not having information about what the fall's gonna look like particularly.
And can we put in that? If we don't have, what do we do?
That if we don't have the season where we're at and it doesn't start until the season starts and those things.
And moving forward with with these contracts, you know, you should set a time limit with their services. And if you, you know, you you get accustomed to, you know, you you like the people. Just like our architects at that point. And we went out and we now have a new firm that's done a wonderful job for us. The this is no different. And there's many more contracts too that you can go out, look at. And it it comes down to money. I mean, it's a business.
And we do try to balance what the terms of contracts are to maximize the savings, because sometimes there's savings in a longer term. But I I think absolutely we need.
The ATI contract, I think, was scheduled to expire in twenty twenty-two. So we did have a sunset date on that where we would have gone out anyway. So so I'm gonna have Jason contact them and start that process moving forward. And I'll work with Danny about putting together the RFP. And like I said, we'll make sure we build in those protections to the board in this contract coming up. So. But I am sorry to see our trainer go.
I am too. Emily was good. She was she was very good. Worked with her for several years and she was very good.
Are we gonna include going forward now pandemic? Language to where we don't get put into that position with the bus company? Because I don't wanna beat a deaf horse, but I mean, I'd really love to know if they've gotten PPP money. Because I mean, that's truly double dipping. And we shouldn't have to pay them for their staff, their their labor or portion of the labor. Even though they say it's it comes down to cost, but.
ATI could have potentially qualified too, couldn't they?
It could have. Yes, yes.
Their employees, even if they're, the only time it doesn't is if all of their trainers are ten ninety-nine.
Okay, but yeah, all right.
What's the question I should be asking?
If they got paycheck protection money or any type of government aid from the CARES Act.
Trust me, can't any business.
If they if they didn't, they're crazy.
And it was easy. There was no qualification for this.
I will ask a question. I'll have an answer next week. Okay, continuing with COVID nineteen issues that we need to address. One of the concerns that I have moving forward that I know is shared by superintendents all around us is the availability of substitute teachers. And, you know, one of the things that we need to try to do is, number one, we need to limit the different people that are coming into our building. We wanna keep that as consistent as possible. And number two, there are, you know, if if somebody, we take the temperature of a teacher coming in the door and if it's over a hundred point four. According to the guidelines, they can't come back for seventy-two hours. So I gotta have sub for them for three days automatically, if that's the case, right? And if they test positive, I got fourteen days. Then I gotta have somebody. So those those things are, which by the way is a whole nother story. But with twenty-two hundred kids, somebody has fever every single day.
Absolutely.
So that's gonna be. Anyway, we have to have plans for that, where we put them, where we house them, you know, everything. But that's beside the point. The what I would like to do, and I had Jason run the information for me to make sure that this was correct. We pay two permanent subs right now. We hire them for the hundred and seventy-six student attendance days and we pay them the summary. So it's no more money than we would pay a sub coming in. We just guarantee him a hundred and seventy-six days. I would like to hire two more and guarantee them a hundred and seventy-six days. So I've got four subs in the hopper that I can use whenever I need them. It's not gonna cost the board any more money because we've looked at it. We use at least four subs every day anyway.
Sorry, are they, is it whatever it is, a hundred some bucks a day or I thought we have somewhere if they work so many days, they're laying one step one?
If they consistently sub for the same person for ten days on the eleventh day, they would move to the base per year. We don't use our permanent subs for long-term subs. We go out on the street. Now, we may change that. And there've been occasions where we have done that because of the specialty of the person that we have on the spot.
I know you just ran how much you paid for subs and you ran two more one seventy-six times, whatever that math is, right?
No, we we look very detailed records of how many subs per day by building, by grade level. And we absolutely have at least four subs per day, every student attendance day.
And are they, they would be, I'm sorry, I'm just pointing, because I see again, they'd be considered then benefit eligible employees?
Because that was the next comment, Sean, full transparency. Those people do become benefit eligible for us.
I'm not questioning whether it's break even or it's sort of the cost of living or money. It goes back to what we just said, you know, temperature check, whatever you walk in the door and that kind of stuff. You gotta move like that.
That's money well spent.
Like I said, if, you know, if Jeff's teaching for us today and he walks in the door and I temperature check him, he's going home and I gotta have somebody in that classroom. In fifteen minutes.
So they do, they report to the school every day? They do no matter what? They're here every day?
So we we have one of the permanent subs that kind of guides the others. And looks at the board every day and Jason looks at the board every day and we try to move people where they need to go. So she'll look at the openings and now that we have three permanent subs, she'll kind of look at that and decide, all right, I can need need this one here. I need this one here. I need this one here. Usually what we do is we have a pre-K through five and a six through twelve. Just so that, so we'll probably have two pre-K through five, two six through twelve. So that we can move people around quickly. Jeff?
Gonna ask a tough question here. September, it's September two thousand nineteen, Jeff's a social studies teacher. Jeff calls in sick. What happens last year? I call in sick in two thousand nineteen. What's the protocol? What do you guys do?
Depends on.
What you're gonna have to do now, if I call in sick in August of twenty twenty, you're gonna have to ask some tough questions. Sick is different now. Because now you're gonna say, do you have a fever? You're gonna have to start asking those questions because and when you call in sick is different.
For students as well, in the guidance, they talk about how the attendance secretary now has to have a series of questions that when a parent calls a kid in sick, they have to ask a series of. Same questions we're gonna have to ask.
They're gonna be, they know this yet or not yet?
No, this all just.
Because it's something you have to do because if you're calling in sick, well, we don't want you there tomorrow if you're got symptoms or whatever. So I'm all for the subs, yeah, but we're gonna have to probably ask, and it's in there. You're gonna have to ask some tough questions. They don't like it. I'm gonna tell you.
Most of the time, when somebody's called sick, they go online to build their absence. And then that that initiates calls on to find a body, right? What we're gonna instruct them to do is to, in the notes to the administrator section, answer that series of questions. So that we have a documented record from them, their self-reporting. So that when, as we come and screen those, then we can make decisions about just what you're referring to.
And potentially on the same topic. And again, I know it's twenty-four hours old or whatever. What do you do if you have, say, two teachers that for whatever reason are high risk and can't come in to teach in the fall?
So I sent an email to staff today.
So on that, let's just make a supposal. Let's suppose that in a couple of weeks you find out, oh, I've got two staff members that in theory are gonna be out because they're at higher risk, although you don't know how long they're gonna be out. Does that mean you may come back and say, now I need to hire four more additional permanent subs?
What I think I will probably do with those people, depending on how, it's not very many. If it's a couple, they'll be our remote learning instructors.
Got it. Okay, fine.
Now, if it's ten, that's a different story.
Got a bigger problem.
Gotta get a substitute.
Well, I mean, sick is different now. I mean. Just don't, it used to be the thing, I don't feel good, I'm not coming into work. Well, that's different now.
Because that could cost you three sick days. So, but yeah, we'll we'll build that form electronically. For staff. And like I said, students, you know, if Sean calls his son in sick, now there's gonna be a serious question you're gonna have to answer.
Well, if you're tested positive, you can blow your sick days into one one test. Your sick days are gone.
You know, I mean, circling back to this, the reason why you're asking us is because even though from a cost perspective, it's neutral, zero, same, whatever. You guys are gonna post those two.
And technically, Sean, it's not neutral, which is why I wanted to come to the board, because there is a benefit liability. Like we have two permanent subs now, neither one of them takes our benefits. But who knows if the next two that come in do and the other two could take them. You know, if they chose to. So it's not necessarily revenue neutral, potentially.
Yeah, but I mean, again, operationally, yeah, you gotta.
Absolutely, you have.
All right. Finance reports, Jay.
You know, probably the question is maybe just verbally, just so we keep this in in our minds and, you know, the finance thing is when is the county saying the tent fee is ready to get sent out to the first distribution?
So I got the extension worksheet from County Clerk's office last week on Thursday at four in the afternoon. We normally get that in the first week of April. I verified that and did the abatement adjustments back to the trailer rate. So we off we go. Those were due today or those were due yesterday. They're then sending those to the collector's office so the tax bills can be created. And right now, everything we're still hearing is that the first tax installment will be due at the end of July. So that already puts us at a three-week from a cash flow perspective, at like a three-week offset. So collection's gonna happen and we usually, normally there is within that first four weeks, we got a first distribution, even though it was small. So right now, we're tracking to a three to six week delay from a cash flow perspective. Quite honestly, what we're able to do on our side for cash flowing is we're adjusting investments that we typically were spun up in July. We're delaying those so that we can live out of the, live out proceeds or reserve proceeds until those can follow back in. But three to six weeks delay in the distribution.
It's all good. You said the management board is just, it's good framework. You want you to, again, hear it. That's why we have a reserve position.
And, you know, to give some some credit, Exelon, I've been in communications with Exelon. Exelon has tentatively agreed to pay their bill at the normal time when it would have been due. So we will get that, we should get that money from there.
So we hope that the collector, we hope that the county treasurer will release that.
But I did talk with Scott Humbard from Exelon and he helped get that process moving. So that was very helpful when I reached out to him.
That's good stuff.
So that was, that was good. And Jay went over it quickly, but, you know, remember, we over levy. We got, went back to the trigger amount with Exelon. Jason checked those numbers with Stu Witt. So we did get those numbers verified and remember that our board's position has always been that we charge all the other taxpayers the same rate that Exelon pays. So whatever rate that came down to, that's where we're at.
Or no, because you just adjusted.
We just adjusted. But that's a position this board has always taken is that X, everybody else pays the same rate that Exelon pays. We don't charge differently. So so we made sure and executed that again this year. Okay? I know that the cafeteria report.
Whatever. It is what it is. It is what it is.
Can't pay a whole lot of attention to those. Just wanted to make sure that if people looked at it, you're not, remember, we didn't search much.
Well, we did, but they picked.
Any other questions on the finance report? Anything else, Ken? Any other agenda items people have?
I had one quick question for you. Has Chris posted the the band director position yet?
Yeah, we actually have eighteen applicants.
I hope we can get a band director we can hold on to more than.
This will be my seventh band director at the high school in sixteen years.
Yeah, I mean, they just both, so so hopefully we can get, that's that's great.
Maybe change our approach a little bit.
Are you hoping to have action on that next week?
I doubt it.
Okay, are you?
It's pretty quick.
Earlier, but kind of related, but unrelated, are you, as we typically view, gonna be asking for us for hiring authority next week?
Well, I usually don't do that till August. If the board would like me to, I will.
This is this, it goes back to Ken when we were saying just fifteen minutes ago about all of us.
Will this happen next year? We don't know, but this year's a different story.
We'll move it up a month. We'll look it up and get it moved up. To July.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Exelon, it's all, it's quiet now, right?
We actually had a Faircom meeting today. Where we talked about that. It's relatively quiet now because the legislation legislators aren't meeting. When they come back, that is one of the priority items that the governor has put out there is energy legislation. There are energy work groups that are gonna continue going. And thanks to our lobbyists, Faircom does have a seat at the table, which will probably be me. But we do have a seat at the table for these negotiations. So more to come, but it was, it's very good that we have a seat at the table.
It's favorable for us. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, good question though. Thanks. Anything else before we go to closed?
I don't think so. Anybody else got anything? Okay, it's seven oh five then. Undertaker first and second motion to win a closed session. For the purpose of considering information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. Chuck So moves and Quint seconds. Roll call, please, LaWanda.